You want, always wanted to record and share screens to all panelists.
Okay.
That way.
And will that automatically pop up?
Yes.
To do that, okay.
When you click.
We'll make sure this thing was working last month. Couldn't get it to work.
Well, it seems like it's working fine now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to turn the video on just to set it down. It was in delay because of. YouTube. Do you have my AirPods or anything there?
Hi folks.
Good evening.
Hey Bill. Hey Mr. Book.
How you doing?
Good. How you doing?
I'm still here.
Everybody, I would like to be able to, you know, get a little bit closer somehow, but I guess this will have to do.
One of these days maybe.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. This is Kelly Hughes. I am, I'm sitting in Jennifer Davis's chair as the new customer service representative.
Hi. You mind telling me your name again?
Can you guys hear me?
You're somebody. I don't know who me is. There's Ray. Good afternoon, Ray.
Nasty. All right, we're having, we're figuring out my computer here. Can everybody hear me now?
Sure. Yeah, I hear you. Or no, I can't hear you.
Okay, great.
S test.
I hear you Carl. Sounds good.
Hey Ray.
Hey.
Hi, this is Frida. Can you hear me?
Yeah Frida.
Yeah.
Can anybody hear me? Yeah Bill.
I hear you.
Okay. It was working fine until she was messing with it, trying to get her screen to bother to quit.
It's seven o'clock. Is staff ready to begin?
Yes. Free, are you ready?
Yes. Was that Cassie?
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
So is everybody ready? Teresa, are you ready?
Yes, sir. We're ready on our end.
Okay, this is the September 8th, 2021 Town of Pittsburgh Planning Board meeting coming to order. The first, first quarter of business is to approve or modify the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion to approve it.
Second, Carl.
It's been moved from second by Frida and Carl. All those in favor say aye please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those, I hear no room for opposed. Those opposed, did I hear right? Everyone approves. The ayes have it. The motion is carried and we've adopted the agenda as it is written. Let's move to the minutes. Are there corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minute?
Eric here, I'll move to approve.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? Everybody satisfied with the minute?
I'm sorry, can you say who made the first motion?
It's Eric Braun.
And I made, I made the, I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Eric and Frida. Those, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye Carl.
Thank you Carl. I hear that that's everybody. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. We move to new business and I think. I think Victoria is speaking about that. Is that right Victoria?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me share my screen really fast. Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
See the screen, but it's very tiny.
Yes. Okay, this is rezoning 2021 04 Garner on Main Street LLC, which is represented by David Meng, is proposing to rezone parcel 6622 from R10 High Density Residential to O&amp;I Office and Institutional. This 0.7 acre property is located at 879 and 881 Hillsborough Street and has been zoned R10 since the late 1980s. The surrounding properties are zoned R10 to the north, south, and east, and R12 to the west. The future land use plan has this property designated for traditional neighborhood. The traditional neighborhood category describes existing neighborhoods that are primarily residential, but can also include a mix of other uses. So some of the non-residential uses in O&amp;I would, would work in the, according to our future land use plan. I'm sure some of you are aware of the Hillsborough Street widening project. This property would likely be affected by, by the project, the NC DOT project. Most of the parking for this site is currently in the right-of-way, which may be used for the expansion and the sidewalk. So any future parking for any uses would have to be managed elsewhere on the site. NC DOT cannot say for certain how this property will be affected as the plans haven't been finalized, but the current plans, as you can see, have the structure located within a proposed drainage construction and utility easement. The applicant is aware of the project and has spoken with the DOT project engineer. The uses permitted in O&amp;I, but not in R10 are listed on this slide. The uses vary between veterinary clinic, multifamily housing, restaurant, convenience store, farmers market, and so on. R10 and O&amp;I are probably the most similar residential and non-residential districts, but as you can see, there's a lot of fairly intense uses that, that are allowed in O&amp;I, but not in R10. A public hearing was held on August 23rd. One member of the public spoke and multiple commissioners spoke against the rezoning citing concerns over incompatible uses with the current surrounding properties and the possible loss of affordable housing. Staff is recommending that the board adopt one of the following motions. Staff is recommending that the board adopt one of the following motions to either recommend approval or denial of the rezoning request.
Thank you, Victoria. Any comments from the board?
Carl here, Ray.
Yeah.
This, this seems to me to be a much better use of a conditional rezoning, or yeah, conditional than general use. I looked over the, the allowed uses as Victoria just showed. There's a handful in there that really concern me, and it concerned me greatly if I was a neighbor. You know, I'll just throw a couple out, you know, and some of these certainly probably are not feasible due to the size of the property and the parking that would be required, like a funeral home, et cetera. But veterinary clinic, that could allow outside kennels and stuff, utility station, transit station, you know, some of these things, again, by virtue of the size of the lot probably aren't even feasible, but a convenience store is another example. I guess a small store could be, could be worked onto that property. But anyway, my point is that if we, you know, the applicant does make reference to what has happened there and what they intend to do, and as such, I would think, and I'm glad for Teresa, Victoria, whoever chime in here, it seems like a conditional would be the way to go as opposed to a general use.
Yes, a conditional use would probably have been the better way to go, but the applicant preferred to go for the general reuse district. So that's where we're at.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's William Baker. We already turned down some.
Sorry, what?
William Baker. I say William Baker. Haven't we already turned down some requests for O&amp;I north of town?
Um, I'm not sure if you're referencing a certain, a specific past rezoning. Do you have the address that you're thinking? Do you know the general location?
North of the French Connection, we turned down one for O&amp;I from residential.
Yes, there, I, I wasn't here for, for one of those. There was one. I'm not sure. Go ahead, Raferd.
That's, I assume, I remember what you're talking about, William. Yes, we did. I think it was right next door, if I remember rightly. In any event, what we're, what we're, the issue tonight is, is whether to make this general, generally commercial. And we have to decide whether to approve this commercial zoning or deny the commercial zoning. And then the owner would be at liberty to come back with some other ideas. But it seems from, basically from the comments I've heard so far, that it's not acceptable for just general commercial rezoning in light of the completely surrounding residential. Well, it's completely surrounded by residences. Is that what I'm understanding so far from the board?
Ray, it's Eric here, and I, yeah, I would agree with you. I think we, we need to deny this and kick it back to give the applicant the opportunity to reapply under a conditional zoning application.
Eric, would you be?
With that, this is Frida Austin. I agree with that. That is just too much. The traffic is heavy. It is just completely residential, and I don't live too far from there. And the traffic is already bad enough to try to put a business, but what he wants right there is, for me, is not acceptable.
Would either of you like to proceed with a motion then?
Sure, Ray, it's Eric. I will move that we make a recommendation to deny the general use rezoning request. And leave it there.
And I'm asking, and I'll second that.
So Eric Braun has moved to deny, and Frida has seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Sir, if, if someone could actually read the motion, because we also need to include the consistency statement for denial.
Do you want me to read the entire paragraph for Teresa?
Please, Eric.
Yes, sir, for the record.
I move that we make a recommendation to deny the general use rezoning request from R10 High Density Residential to OI Office and Institutional of an approximate .78 acre parcel, parcel ID number 6622, located at 879 and 881 Hillsborough Street, and adopting the Town of Pittsburgh Planning Board Land Use Plan Consistency Statement for denial.
Thank you.
I, Frida Austin, will second that motion.
Been moved by Eric and seconded by Frida to deny, according to this statement read. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we are prepared to vote. All those to, in favor of the denial of this rezoning application, please say aye.
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 Anyone in favor? All those in favor? Hearing no votes for approval, we, the motion is carried that this action is denied.
Ray, Carl here. May I interject one more thought here? Victoria, or whoever is going to notify the applicant, you know, we talked about conditional zoning, but I want to make sure they understand that we are not given sort of a blanket green light because we still have concerns, and they were mentioned about any type of non-residential use there. While conditional would be the only way I would entertain it, it would depend on exactly what use was being proposed. So, yeah, just make sure, just make sure they understand that, that we're not, you know, that, that, that it's not sort of a blanket green light, if you will.
Okay, will do. Thank you, Carl.
So to clarify, the motion to deny passed unanimously, and Carl's statement is well received. So, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, the other is another rezoning issue. I think Teresa's gonna handle that.
Yes, sir. This is Teresa Thompson. Good evening, Chairman Bland and members of the board. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so this is also a general rezoning request. Jamie Schwedler, on behalf of CTF LLC, is requesting a general rezoning from M2, which is manufacturing, heavy industrial, RA, residential agricultural, and RA2, which is residential agricultural, two acres, to R15, which is low-density residential, of three parcels, the total being approximately 740 acres, located in near 1377 Sanford Road, Pittsburgh, and adjacent to and south of Moncur Pittsburgh Road. And the property consists of three parcels, as outlined in blue on the screen. It's currently located outside of town limits, adjacent to and outside of town limits, which is the pink line, just south of town. The current use of the property is vacant. The majority of the property is undeveloped. It was formerly used as the Webster poultry pond site, which is located right here in the middle. And there's also a building that should be right there, that was also used for the poultry plant, which is currently not being used. So the surrounding area is on a mixture of RA2, which is the lighter green color, low-density R15, which is this orange color here, plain development district, which is Chatham Park, is the brown color, manufacturing light industrial M1, which is the light purple, manufacturing heavy industrial M2, which is the dark purple, also including part, a portion of the subject property. And the property is also located close to Chatham County's zoning jurisdiction, which would be just south of the ETJ. The request to rezone the property to low-density residential, R15, is compatible with the mixture of land uses in the area, mostly consisting of a residential nature, and is consistent with the intent of the low-density residential zoning district. The zoning ordinance, which was in effect at the time of the rezoning application, identifies the R15 Low Density Residential Zoning District as low-density residential areas of mostly single-family dwellings, plus open areas where similar residential development will likely occur. The uses permitted in this district are designed to stabilize and protect the essential characteristics of the area and to prohibit all activities of a commercial nature, except certain home occupations controlled by specific limitations. The future land use map identifies the site as a mixture of low-density residential neighborhood, which is this green color, rural residential, which is the lime green, and in the industrial land use categories, which is the purple. So the requested zoning to low-density residential, R15, is compatible with the low-density residential land use category, but it is not compatible with the rural residential and industrial land use categories. The rezoning request to low-density residential, R15, would be compatible with the low-density residential neighborhood land use, which includes residential developments at a low enough density to support onsite septic systems. Water may be supplied to these neighborhoods either through private wells or public water service, depending on the availability of nearby water lines. So that, that is the description in the land use plan. Staff understands that the land use plan is, language is somewhat outdated, and we are working on going through the process of having an update of the land use plan. So we'll keep the board in the loop of the progress made there. The rural residential land use category includes areas where agricultural and large lot residential development is encouraged, maintaining a rural character in these areas. The limited development in these areas will be supported by onsite well and septic systems. And the rural residential agricultural areas are primarily located near the outer edge of the planning area, which again is this lime green color. So the industrial land use category, per the land use plan, includes indoor manufacturing, warehousing, and trades. So the largest area designated for this type of uses is located in the southeast portion of the town, near Moncur, Moncur Pittsburgh Road and Industrial Park Drive. So although this site is partially located within the rural residential and industrial land use categories, approximately half of the total property is located in the low-density residential neighborhood land use category. It's also located near the medium density residential neighborhood land use category. The proposed site has adequate accessibility to its, to it located, that it's located adjacent to a major highway in 15501, has secondary access to Moncur Pittsburgh Road, has access to public water, and is adjacent to the future Sanford Tour Force main. In addition, the subject property is located near the existing R15 zoning district, which again is this orange color here. And it's also located near Potterstone Village, just north of the site, which includes lots approximately 10,000 to 14,000 square feet in size. So similar density located nearby the site. The proposed site is near the corporate limits of town, providing easy access and reduced travel times. Therefore, if the board finds the proposed property to be a suitable location for low-density residential development, and if the rezoning request is approved, staff recommends updating the future land use map to reclassify this entire site to be the low-density residential. So we'd be removing the industrial and the rural residential categories from this, these areas and all become low-density residential. So as discussed, yes, sir?
Oh, I thought you were through. I was just gonna make a comment, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm almost done. If you, if you'd like to make a comment, you can go ahead.
I'll just observe it. Oh, okay, finish.
It's up to you, okay. Um, so as discussed, the current zoning districts are RA, RA2, and heavy industrial. So looking at the existing heavy industrial general land use categories per the UDO, which is what's in effect now, the main difference between the two is obviously the residential and the industrial. So there's a little bit of both, different types of land use categories allowed in both the R15 and the M2. So the biggest difference between the two is residential's allowed basically in the R15, whereas industrial's not, and vice versa, for the heavy industrial. And the, the use categories are more similar in the RA and RA2 versus the R15. So the biggest difference between these districts is the minimum lot size. The RA is a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. The RA2 is two acres, whereas the R15, the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. So there was a public hearing held on August the 9th. The general type of discussion by the public and the town board is included in the memo that's in your packets. There were two people from the public to speak. The first person's main contention was a possible property line dispute, though it was stated that she was not against the rezoning request in general. She just wanted to resolve this possible property line dispute. On the second person from the public to speak, gave reasons such as not being consistent with the land use plan, not located in town, the rezoning area being too large to rezone at one time, and that it should be rezoned in, in different phases over the timeline, the timeline for a project that would be developed on the site. Board comments included not being in favor of general rezonings in general, especially of the size, and none of the uses were particularly offensive, but that the town has better toolbox, tools in the toolbox now to do things, to do these types of development requests. And also that the resolution for the property line dispute be, that the board be updated on that before they voted on the rezoning request. So after review and discussion, staff recommends the board to make one of the following motions, basically a motion for approval, Basically, a motion for approval, which would include the land use plan consistency statement for approval. In that statement includes language on updating the land use plan map or a recommendation for denial. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Teresa.
And also, the, the applicants are here tonight as well. If you have questions for them, and if, if they wanted to have a presentation as well. They did one at the Board of Commissioners' public hearing, so they might, they might have one for you tonight as well.
Fine. Well, then let me ask the applicant, according, would you, does the applicant have anything to say or to add to the sort of a presentation?
Good evening, Chairwoman Jamie Schreiber with Pulte Home 311, April Street. Yes, we do have a application or a presentation, and I can share that now. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah, as well as one hears anyone on Zoom sometimes, that's fine. But go ahead.
Are you able to see the point as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the applicant, with me tonight is Mr. Chris Rowley, Vice President of Entitlement and Development. Together, we'll explain why the rezoning request is right for this property, right for Pittsboro, and right for the citizens and future residents of the town. This is a general zoning request for R15. It was filed at the same time as a planned unit development, which is only allowed with a special use permit. While it's a simultaneous filing, those cases are moving together at different times. And so this is step one, the rezoning request that we'll focus on tonight. The board closed the public hearing on that and moved this case forward to your board. Step two will be the special use permit request, which should come before the planning board at some future date in October. But tonight, we'll just focus on the merits of the general use zoning. I just want to make that clear, your references to that, but today, we're just addressing the general use zoning. So as Teresa mentioned, this zoning involves about 740 acres, just one mile south of the downtown area and adjacent to Moncur-Pittsburgh Road. The change would consolidate the existing residential agricultural RA2 and M2 and manufacturing uses into one R15 district, which is designated as a low-density district per the zoning ordinance. In effect, it would take land from one low-density residential zoning district into another and remove some more intense manufacturing uses from the manufacturing district in a location where the extension of utilities and transportation infrastructure are anticipated. And this pattern of growth is consistent with other nearby zoning patterns, and that it would extend that R15 district shown up in this area that Teresa pointed out earlier, down and kind of adjacent to the outline of our site there, shown in dark orange. This will provide additional housing stock closer downtown, and that the red circle top is of course the roundabout is part of Pittsboro's main business district. So providing a good amount of housing stock in the area that's, that's close to existing services. It's also consistent with the theme of needed housing found in your land use plan. So the land use plan policies in Section 5 recognize the growing need for housing in this area, and we recommend that Pittsboro to retiree. Stating that Pittsboro and the surrounding areas have become a magnet for retirees centered initially on Farrington Village. The wealth brought by this particular population has enabled an improved variety and quality of services now available for all residents. So even though this policy does speak to retirees, it does talk about the added housing stock and how that benefits the town overall. It's also overall consistent with the land use map. Now Teresa did a great job in cleaning the three different designations that apply to the site. The low-density residential in brown, the residential agricultural in rural in green, and a small portion of industrial in purple. But we maintain that R15 is compatible with all three, because they all three anticipate either a low-density or residential designation. And the existing streams and buffers on the site will reinforce that rural feel. With respect to the industrial, it does consolidate the industrial to the north of Moncur-Pittsburgh Road instead of straddling that road. We believe that's a principal and reasonable concentration of those land uses in that area. It consolidates those hardballs and two main districts into one uniform district, organizing residential growth in a more predictable pattern and focuses industrial where, an area that's more predictable and kind of isolated to the industrial center. And as noted in your staff report, it's also consistent with the comprehensive transportation plan. Chatham Parkway is recommended for extension to a four-lane building in red across the dash screen. This, this development provides meaningful connections from 15501 bypass to Moncur-Pittsburgh Road and is approved on the step insulated for construction as early as 2025 by NC DOT, which is just another recognition of anticipated growth in this location. This slide, this both the permitted uses for R15 on the left and the special use is generally allowed with a special use permit. Now, even though we're not pressing the special use permit tonight, I've highlighted the intended use of, of the zoning request, which would be residences, and the reason we filed for the PUD, which is to provide single-family residential and townhome products. While we can technically develop in any of these permitted uses, there are three factors that contribute to greater predictability in this case that distinguishes it from other cases. We're aware the town disavers general use rezonings, but in this particular case, when you look at the factors of this site and the factors of what most likely will be developed here, it makes sense. First, due to the size and location of the site and the rising land costs, things like churches, pools, and parks, even though they're permitted, are not likely to be realistic principal uses. The most likely and commercially reasonable is single-family residential detached that we're pursuing here in the townhomes. And second, the density is limited in the zoning ordinance to three units per acre in R15 based on the lot size maximums. So there is predictability that this is anticipated as residential use, the market will support it as residential use, and there's a limit on density to three units per acre. That even though there's not conditions or specificity, there is certain technical reward as to what that density would be. And third, this zoning actually eliminates much more intense uses available today. So this slide shows what permitted uses won't change and which ones would be changed or eliminated if the request is approved. Here, many of the same residential uses are permitted in both the existing and proposed residential districts shown in green on your screen. So these would be permitted in the new district, they'd also be permitted in any of the residential districts and, and some, some uses would be permitted in any of those districts. So whether or not the rezoning would be approved, much of the residential uses would be allowed. However, some of the more intense uses like quarries, concrete plants, or construction yards are actually removed by downzoning this to R15, which are all shown in red. So if approved, all of those possible uses that could be built today would be removed from the equation if we'd have a more predictable residential pattern of growth. As a result, when looking at the size and location of this tract, combined with the removal of those more intense uses close to downtown, the proposed zoning actually provides more predictable land uses in a category consistent overall with the land use plan goals than the existing zoning does today. And for that reason, it's reasonable and in the public interest and distinguishable from other general zoning cases that you might encounter. Now to explain the demand for low and density residential use in this area, I'd like to invite Chris Rowley to explain what led them to seek the rezoning change here, and then I'll sum up a few of our remarks at the end.
Great, thank you, Jamie. As Jamie said, my name is Chris Rowley. I work for Pulte Home Company, and I've been developing communities in this area for over 15 years, many of which are active adult communities or neighborhoods that are for folks who are 55 and over. So when we're looking at sites, we gather market data, we look at population data to determine in a particular market, what housing needs are lacking. And what we found in looking at Pittsboro is that Pittsboro's population has been increasing. And that the 55 and older population makes up over half of the household. So therefore, this is the largest consumer group in Pittsboro, and it's projected to grow about 20% over the next four to five years, which is higher than the projections for the overall triangle area for the same population. We have found that 55 sections, 55 and over sections of prior chapel is sold out, and the active adult sections of Chatham Park will be sold out within three years. So we've sought the R15 zoning because at three units per acre, it provides the type of density that we need for, we needed for the lot sizes that we typically build, which accounts for the mainstream and buffers on site, and that will, that will also remain as open space. So we believe that there's a need for active adult housing in Pittsboro, and that it wants to be located close to town services, and it wants to be located close to downtown. And that this site provides the ideal size to provide this housing. Providing the type of residential housing at this density allows for housing variety and is in the public's best interest. Jamie, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chris. And some of the zoning request is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan and land use plan, and the proposed district is compatible with the area as Ms. Townsend explained, as Ms. Townsend explained. It's also reasonable and in the public interest because it creates a new pot of low-density housing in an area close to downtown that's walkable to services and supported by land infrastructure extensions. And there's a need for housing in this area, whether 55 or not, here that Pittsburgh is growing. And this area is primed for the type of low-density request that we're making here. The Board of Commissioners closed the public hearing. We would like to request your recommendation for approval tonight so that we can move this case back to the Board of Commissioners for final action. Thank you for your consideration, and we're happy to receive any questions.
Thank you very much. So let's, any comments from the board?
I have a question. Do they, do they know the approximate amount of people that'll be living in that area upon, upon buildout?
I can, I can answer the, the maximum amount of density that would be allowed, which at 740 acres and a maximum of three units per acre is about 2,220 units maximum.
And that, that's what I roughly came up with, 2,100 using 700. So you're saying that all the acreage will be developed, there's no parks, there's nothing else going in there, there's no land that's not going to be used for building?
Well, because it's a general zoning, we don't have areas carved out exactly where all of those will be. That will come before you in the special use permit, where we do have a concept plan that talks about the amenities that are committed for each of the areas, how we're clustering the buildings, how we're reserving land for open space, and how we're reserving land for repurposing buffers and services for the residents. So there is some of that. That'll be part of the next request coming before you.
Yeah, because what I'm trying to determine is how many more vehicles are going to be traveling on 15501. Have we, are you planning on a study or is the board going to ask for a study?
So we have Kevin Dean with us tonight from Kim Lee Horn, who has been in discussions on that. Kevin, if you could address the status of that?
Absolutely. So the, given the size of the project and the length of the buildout, it's our expectation that we'll perform a phased traffic study. And that'll look as each phase of a site plan comes in, we'll evaluate the traffic impacts at that time. So we haven't done a formal TIA yet, but we are expecting to do one of those. We, we know that one will be required by DOT in the town. It just hasn't, hasn't gotten to that point to date through the rezoning process.
And that's typical of what we're seeing from DOT with a, a project of this size and phases, right, Kevin?
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
To, to clarify, I would need to double check, but if the special use permit is approved, it will be based on the prior zoning and prior subdivision ordinance? And I, so I don't think it does require HTIA, but I can double check on that just to make sure, but that's not what we're supposed to be talking about specifically right now. But I just wanted to make, make you aware that, I know from what I understand, DOT would require TIA, but on the town side, I don't, I don't remember the ordinance that was in place at the time requiring that.
And I, and I think you're right, Teresa. Either way, NC DOT is going to require a traffic analysis, so there still will be that level of review and evaluation of the impacts at the appropriate time, whether the town ultimately requires that or not. But that's a great point, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Charity Myes. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, Charity.
Go ahead, Charity.
Hi, I'm looking at this future land use map. My concern, again, is the size of the rezoning that's happening. And you're saying the development will be phased, and I'm curious why the rezoning effort won't be phased as well. It seems to me like the M2 area is quite small compared to the RA2 area looks very large. And I understand that the low-density residential area, that kind of gray-green there, seems consistent to me with the change to R15, but that rural residential area, I don't know, two acres to me is very different than 15,000 square foot lots. So I'm wondering why it's so big, and also why you wouldn't just develop the low-density residential first and then think about expanding?
That's a great question. And I think I can answer it based on what Mr. Rowley had mentioned before, which is that the demand in this area is just growing exponentially. I think a lot of us thought with COVID, things might slow down, but it's actually been the opposite. People are moving to North Carolina at a much faster rate. And the demand for this is really outpacing the supply to the extent that it's causing a hardship for folks to find places to relocate. And so if, even though we do plan it to be phased, if we waited to go through entitlement processes, you know, at five years from now, six years from now, it wouldn't provide us the ability to react to that market and provide homes for those folks in the timely manner that we need to. The other thing that going for the rezoning all at once does is let us look at the site holistically and lets our planners figure out how they can cluster the development away from the streams, maximize the open space, plan for connectivity to amenities and greenways and things like that on an overall scale. Sometimes when you do that in piece, you know, you have things done at different times, different standards apply, and it becomes very difficult to make those areas when they're fully built out really look like they, they marry up and have that same holistic planning. And so the, the zoning just gives us the right to go forward with the more detailed plans, and of course, the special use permit is the first step in that. But having that and that all in place allows us to make those plans on a holistic level. And the reason that we had to do that specifically for this case is that the new zoning ordinance didn't have the same amount of flexibility to plan out the lot sizes that Pulte needs to provide housing for these folks and the type of lot sizes that many of their customers find manageable and smaller lots to be able to, to maintain. And so having this all come together at the same time provides more predictability to make it a holistic development and to know what those rights will be going forward.
And if, if I could show you the overall map, I think what I included in my packet was more of a snippet of the area, so I can show you a comparison of the entire land use plan map for the town of Pittsboro. To speak to your point on the rural residential land use classification. So that, per the land use plan, this area is supposed to be more for large lot development and also for well and septic, septic systems, and also to be on the outer perimeter of the, of the town. So we, we do realize that this, the land use plan needs to be updated. I can't say what, what all this will look like in the next two years from now when we go through that process, but right now, what staff is looking at is what's in place, which does show this area, which is on the, a portion of the Townsend tract to be in the RA2, which is why staff said that it's not, that the R15 would not be compatible with it. And then when you compare the the land use plan map to the current zoning map, you can see that that rural residential land use classification pretty, pretty closely mirrors the RA2 zoning district. So you know, that, that would be the two acre minimum lot size. Um, and the applicant is correct, the, the UDO does not include HUD language. The UDO was written by Clarion Associates. So we're not, I'm not sure why HUD language was not included. That, that is something that's on the to do list for staff to, to look at incorporating. Um, but just, just for clarification, there, there are other options for developing this property. Um, which would include a possible text amendment to the UDO. Uh, also conservation cluster subdivision options. Um, that could allow varying minimum lot sizes, varying setbacks while allowing the, uh, same density. Um, you just have to have a certain percentage of minimum open space for that type of development. And a third option, um, that was available and still, still would be available is, um, rezoning to R15 through the conditional zoning process, which is similar to what Rexford, Rexford Landing, um, did, which is located north of town. Um, right here, you can actually see they, it was rezoned to RACZ uh, several months ago. So if you all remember that process, they, they went through the rezoning process, showed a, a map. Um, a site plan that went with the property and that does allow for varying, um, standards such as minimum lot size and setbacks as well. If approved by the board. So just for clarification, um, on the land use, the land use plan zoning and what the options are for this type of process.
Thanks, Teresa. If I could just respond to that, all of those options were explored, um, back in March of this year. And we've had extensive conversations, extensive conversations with staff about why those options weren't able to be pursued from the site. And I would just like to echo what was said in the earlier case. Um, it's the landowners, you know, right under North Carolina, to apply for the zoning, um, that they would like to pursue. And that's what's before you today. Unfortunately, those other options do not work, um, in terms of getting these houses in the ground for people, um, in a predictable way, in a way that, um, allows us to move forward and make lots available. Um, because the projections that Mr. Raleigh explained, uh, we have to plan years in advance to make sure that they're actually available in the volume that folks need. Um, so unfortunately those are not options that we can pursue at this time. But what we can pursue and what's before you today is a general use rezoning. Um, that will be followed by this special use permit and provide a great amount of detail. But the general zoning does include a considerable amount of obnoxious uses and things, um, that are undesirable in that area. Um, and as, as Teresa noted, it was a great point that that future land use map, um, does need to be updated to reflect the pace of folks moving here and, and what the land, um, is likely to be developed, um, to meet that need of moving into the area. Tremendous amount of seniors trying to relocate close to their families and loved ones. Um, and so that's something that is, is, is actually very common. It's very common in towns like Pittsburgh. As more and more people move to North Carolina, that future land use map is to be a guide. It's not even absolute. And it's situations like this that make, make it evident that we can draw lines on a paper as to where the usage should be. But each time we look at a case, we have to look at what the applicant is requesting to do and what they're offering to do. And make a decision whether we want to provide that amount of low density for folks to be able to call Pittsburgh home. Um, under the terms that, that we've submitted. So, um, happy to answer further questions on that, but it's something we have evaluated. Um, thought very hard about, but weren't able to, um, do zoning or the other methods.
Um, ju- just to clarify, I wasn't trying to say how the land use map should be updated. I was referring to more of the age of the land use plan, being that it was last updated in 2012. So that, that's more of the reason, uh, per 160D, the new statutes, it actually requires land use plans to be updated every cer- certain number of years, especially towns that are experiencing growth. But the result of that update process is going to be through community input, um, board input. So I'm not trying to imply, you know, how it should be updated. Um, just that it, we, we do anticipate an update, um, mainly because of the age of the land use plan. Um, and then also to clarify, conditional zoning is, is binding to the property. So if, if something were to get approved through a conditional rezoning, um, there's no expiration date. It's rezoned to that. Um, so you know, that's, that's not something that, versus a special use permit where you would have an expiration date. So if, if you did want to go through that process, I'm just explaining that that, I don't see how that would not be an option. Um, not saying that that's what you should do. I'm just, I'm just trying to explain to the board that there are other options.
Yeah. And, and thanks Teresa. I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to emphasize we've evaluated those options and, um, conditional zoning would be have, something we'd have to voluntary, voluntarily submit to and evaluated that and just decided not to, um, based on, on the reasons I stated earlier. So thank you for raising it and appreciate the clarification.
Thanks for your, both of your clarifications. Um, I'll go back to just that one little comment that I was going to observe early on to sort of get started on another few perhaps. And that, uh, many people have been, um, well, had a preference for the, uh, the heavy industrial zoning not to be there in such full force. And, uh, I was just going to observe, this is going to remove some of that industrial, heavy industrial area, which appears to be in the middle of town. That was, that was all that comment was to be about. Um, I, I, the, the thing that I am, I think I am resolved with is the discussion about the easement, uh, but would anyone care to, that was one of the issues brought up by a landowner, I think. Uh, is there any further comment about that?
Are you referring to the, the property line?
Yeah, that property line easement down north to south, the, the, the DOT road, actually. Uh, I see Robbie's visible here. Uh, Robbie, do you want to talk about that?
Jamie, uh, I'll let Jamie go ahead and talk about that. And then if we need, um, description, I can go into it when you do more detail.
Okay. Yeah. Happy to. Um, so there was a resident, uh, who's adjacent property owner and there'd been, um, months of discussion about a, um, boundary line dispute. Now that, um, Robbie go into any details of that that the board would like to hear. But she did say that she wasn't opposed to the rezoning, was just trying to get it resolved. Um, the property owners did offer several solutions to kind of, um, swap property essentially to resolve the issue. Um, and it, I think, um, it's fair to say it's just a separate issue. It doesn't, it's not tied to the zoning case. What we're zoning is our property that doesn't impact, um, her property. And I know that there's been continued conversations on that. Um, and Robbie's happy to provide a map to illustrate where, where that issue is, if, if needed.
Yeah. My point is it seems to be resolved.
That's right.
Or not an issue.
It's not an issue. I, I think there, there, um, Robbie, I'll let you, I'm sure there's ways to kind of paper the, the swap and figure out, um, how that's finally documented, but it's not an issue for this zoning case.
Right.
Uh, yeah. So Robbie Oden, where they're driving now. So yeah, uh, Mr. Bland, um, I would agree with what, uh, Jamie just said. It's, we, we feel like it's not an issue with the, there was a boundary line, um, overlap. We have seen, um, found or located another corner that, um, that actually gave the crab trees additional land. So, um, we're not discussing that. We cleaned that up. Uh, we have provided a new survey and a boundary line agreement, uh, for the crab trees to, uh, to look at, review and hopefully to agree to it. Um, I, I think the issue that they have was an, an easement that was north of this boundary line agreement. Um, that, uh, that doesn't align over the current, um, alignment or the, um, of International Woodyard Road. So, um, and I think, and also I should have said this earlier, Robin Rose is on the cause of guest and, uh, we can make him, if we make him a panelist. I don't know if Cassie or Kelly could do that. And then he'll be glad to talk about it, but it's Robin Rose and, uh, see if he has anything. Robin, we've been meeting with the adjacent property owners probably more than, uh, 20, 30 times. And again, I think we've got, um, uh, I think we, the trees would agree that the property line is not, it was just an easement that we have no control over.
That's, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I feel resolved.
Again, if, if we had more, if we want to go a little more depth, I can share a screen, but I, I, I'm not sure it's needed, but we'll be glad to do whatever your wishes are.
Yeah. We don't, we don't want to confuse the board with implying it's part of the zoning. It's separate.
I only wanted to bring up the issue that, that was on the public, uh, hearing and, uh, and the, the issue that, the fact that the issue is resolved or or not an issue and not an issue with you, but with someone else, that's fine with me. I, I've simply wanted to bring it up to indicate that it was, uh, resolved or under control in some way. That's it. Uh, anymore, any comments from the board or any, any questions? I would like to sort of try to get back, though it's very difficult. Uh, I'd like to get to the idea that this is a rezoning issue and not having to do with, uh, a site plan or any other plan yet. Although it's certainly connected, but the issue we have to decide is whether this property is suitable for this rezoning issue or this, this circumstance. Um, later we'll find the work on the details of what happens in it. Uh, is that fair to say, Teresa?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any comments from the board? Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, William.
I'm just a little concerned at how this affects the industrial properties that are in close proximity. And it's kind of like the old airport thing. Everybody closes in around the airport and complains about the airplanes.
Right. Yeah. Good question. Um,
uh, yeah, we, we need some industry in the town to support the people that aren't over 55, that need jobs. And when we keep pushing in residential, 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 we're not providing jobs for our people.
But that's a good point to the extent. It's a question for the applicant team. I think that the portion of the industrial that we're removing is a rather small portion of that overall area. I can share the map again if you like. Um, and, um, not all of that area is actively being, being used as industrial. So, um, it's not really taking away, uh, jobs on our site. Um, it's just, it's just replacing kind of a, a higher end, better use. And still a great deal of industrial left, both on our side of Moncture, Pittsburgh and on, uh, the north side.
Um, can we put the, can we have that map of the first map that we had back on to the showing?
I'm not against, I'm not against the project, but I just think we need to be careful to protect. We're chipping away at our industrial properties and our, our jobs in the town.
Well put. Yes. I think well, uh, well thought out question. Uh,
My concern again is that we're also chipping away at the more rural areas of our town. I just feel like this area is so huge and it concerns me that this could become one homogenized neighborhood with little lots consuming that entire land area.
And, and to, that's a, uh, it's a good question and a fair point. And just to be clear, it could be one large neighborhood today by right without the rezoning. Obviously at a, a lower density, but it still could happen today without the rezoning.
Sure. But the lot sizes would vary and I think that that is, I don't know, to me, a little bit more agreeable and consistent with, um, the, the original intent of these zones.
Uh, Carl Schaefer here, Ray and, and board. Uh, for those of us on this side of town, which is Bill and I, uh, we know that currently we have a serious transportation bottleneck. And the only way to get north from anywhere, Moncture Road, uh, 15501 is via 15501 north. Or what I, the 87 bypass, both of which get blocked up in the morning by school traffic, parents taking their kids to school. So they're coming into the elementary school via Town Lake Park and down that way. Uh, I'm saying all this because with the possibility of 2,000 homes, and I realize build out takes a while. But without, without a divisive transportation plan that's in effect, you know, we see roads, uh, that are on the map that are, uh, recommended. But we don't have a transportation study. Thank you. We don't have a transportation study. Uh, you know, and maybe it's a chicken egg thing, I guess. I know Chatham Park when they were, you know, the first thing they did was they built roads. And then the houses in the school came in all around it. Uh, but I think we need to define that. A little bit more rigidly. Uh, otherwise to me, I'm reading number two here. It says that, uh, this would not be in the public interest, uh, but would have an, an unreasonable impact on the community. So the applicant is talking about the future and future residents of Pittsburgh. But we, we, we can't forget about the existing residents of Pittsburgh. Uh, I think we have a sincere obligation to them as well. So, uh, just bringing that up. And the second thing, I tried to get ahold of Danny Smith today and couldn't do it. And I'm sorry for my delay in thinking about this, but at some point in the past, much of this land was under a, uh, industrial irrigation zone and it did have groundwater contamination. So I don't know what the status, Bill, maybe you know, I don't know what the status is of the, uh, the old state permits, the closing of the lagoon, uh, has all that stuff been approved by the state, uh, for moving forward into this kind of use?
My knowledge, it's spray permit is still in effect.
Bill, would you repeat that?
Has it been canceled lately? I say to my knowledge, this spray permit for, okay, you know, is still in effect. I may be wrong, but I know it was for quite a while.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to check on and, and, and I didn't get the answer, but there has been in the past groundwater contamination. And as we, as we see when, when homes get built upon a site like this, uh, where things are sort of forgotten about, uh, it can really be an ugly mess down the road. So I think we need to verify that. I know it's very extremely peripheral to the charge at hand here, but I think the relevance is high enough that we need to be concerned about that.
Yeah, I, I can actually verify that, that there, there is no remaining issues with that permit and no contamination. We give that connection with the special use permit. Um, and I, I believe some of those members are not panelists, but I, I can't tell if Ben Latino is, is actually on, I think he is. Um, we, we can address details of that if needed, but he's not, but that is not an issue.
Jamie, I'm here. Can y'all hear me?
Go ahead.
Yes. There seems to be some feedback. I don't know if there's, if others are still unmuted, but Benny, Benny there?
I am here. I'm, I'm not exactly sure. Like I'd say everything's up, but I don't know if y'all can hear or see me.
We can.
Okay. Um, yeah. So the, uh, wet weather pond, uh, that is there, uh, for the previous chicken plant usage. Uh, the developer is in the process of working with the state to close that weather basin. Um, and the associated land application spray fields that are on the property. Um, so that work plan in is in action at the moment. Um, and that will effectively in the future, clear out the, uh, discharge permit for the former wastewater plant that was there. Um, and any other, um, issues that were on the site.
Well, I heard two different things. I heard from one person that it was closed and done. And the other said it is being closed and is still an active site, uh, which are contradictory. And I think we need some verification on that. Uh, you know, sometimes You know, sometimes I've, I've worked in this field, some of these things can take ten or fifteen years, especially if groundwater remediation is involved, and I don't know that it is, but I know years ago there was violations of two L standards out there, and those things can persist for many years. So despite the fact there was a plan, I'm not comfortable personally until the state has given the full green light, that the wells are clear, the wells are abandoned, the lagoon is closed, there's no residual materials, heavy metals, what have you in the lagoon. Just my personal, personal take on that.
So, so let me be, I try to be more precise. What I, what I meant was that the permits are active, there are, there are no current violations that my, our understanding is that there are, there are several remaining kind of housekeeping items, but not, there has not been any contamination and it has not been used as an active spray field for years. There's just remaining kind of tying up loose ends. Ben, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, Jamie, that's, that's my understanding. Obviously, McKimmon Creed is not actively involved in the closure plan for that project, but it's my understanding that it's, it's actively underway. It has been for a few months now towards the closure and that, like as you said, there are no, you know, active issues with the, with the site that is proceeding towards closure.
Thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to try to make a sensible comment about, about the, some, or respond to some of the ideas here. About traffic and people traveling and actually just being alive, you know, the population growth for this area is, is predicted to be such based on the US Census figures. No matter who is here building anything, it's just a matter of the population growth is expected to grow to whatever the numbers are. I don't think that there would be any change in the population growth if a different entity were here working on the problem. That's just what's happening here. These people are just growing and coming here. It's going to happen no matter what. I found down in my area where most of those roads seem to be, you know, everyone wants them until they're nearby, and then no one wants them anyway. That's just another problem that we're all having. So the roads are certainly an issue and are to be resolved. The population is something that, you know, it's a bunch of individuals creating a bunch of other people. I, I don't see that it has anything to do with, we're, we're not making them come here. We're not keeping anyone away. We're just trying to deal with them as, as, as people are. Okay, that's just some general ideas that, that I can't get away from, from my perspective. This, this issue is, is only about whether the site and the location and the area is appropriate for this kind of zoning. All those other issues are something that we are extraordinarily important and all correct to be thinking about, but they're going to be resolved or dealt with in some way when a site plan comes or when a special use permit comes. Right now, what we're talking about is whether this site is appropriate for rezoning to our fifteen or, or general use rezoning. Okay. Enough of that. More comments, ideas, or perspectives from the board about this rezoning issue? Any more comments from the applicant? I see from Rob to Jamie.
I just forgot to address one question that, that the extension of Chatham Parkway is on the state Transportation Improvement Plan and funded and slated to be under construction in twenty twenty-five. So that improvement is going forward, and it, it's a signal of where the DOT anticipates growth, and our project would be kind of on either side of that extension. So it is aligning with that growth metric, and that planned infrastructure is major and is underway by the state.
Anything else from the board? So my perspective is it's, it's appropriate zoning for where it is and for what it is, the corridor of the, the avenue into town from the south. We'll have other problems to deal with, but if I, if I try to separate what the question is, is whether this is an appropriate place for this kind of thing, that's what I'm, that's how I, that's my perspective. So I would like to ask for a motion from the board to approve or to disapprove of this matter tonight. I can't tell if anyone's speaking or trying to speak. Unmute yourselves if you're wishing to speak and, and come forward with a motion.
Chairman Blain, can you see the motions on the screen? Are they showing on the screen?
What?
Can you see the motions on the screen?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make.
I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and I would like to, to sit here a while with your thoughts and ask you to come forward with a motion to deny or approve.
Carl Schaefer, I will make a motion for the latter, a recommendation to deny the general use rezoning request. The lower paragraph that's on our slide.
So you all, I presume, heard Carl's motion to deny, the recommendation to deny. Is there a second to Carl's motion to deny?
It's Eric, I will a second.
It's been moved in sectors by Carl. Carl moved Eric. Seconded the motion to deny this rezoning tonight. Are there other, is there other discussion? And I will ask you, there being no more discussion, I'm going to ask that you state your name when you vote so that we can keep this clear here. All those in favor of, of Carl's motion to deny, please say aye.
Chairman Blain, I'm, I'm sorry, is, is Mr. Messick on the call?
Yes, he's here. No, yes, he is. I see his name.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, if it's okay, just for the record, I think it would be best to, to actually read the motion, and I'm sorry for the inconvenience. I mean, if Mr. Messick thinks it's okay just to refer to it, but.
Okay.
Teresa, you want to just?
Carl, would you read the motion, please?
To, to read the whole paragraph, Teresa?
Mr. Messick?
Yes.
Is it okay just, okay?
Go ahead.
I, I move that we, the planning board, make a recommendation to deny the general use rezoning request from M two manufacturing, heavy industrial, RA, residential, agricultural, and RA two, RA two acres to R fifteen low desert, low density residential of three parcels, ID six oh seven seven four eight nine seven two zero seven four one three, the total being approximately seven hundred and forty point eight four acres, and adopting the town of Pittsboro Planning Board Land Use Plan Consistency Statement for denial.
That is the motion that Carl made and that Eric seconded. All those now in favor of the motion to deny, say aye, please.
Eric, aye. Baker, aye.
Carl, aye.
Ray Carney, aye.
I hear. I hear Carl and Eric and Ray and
and Bill.
And Bill. Vote aye. Is that correct? Anybody else who voted aye? Okay, all those opposed say no. I'm voting opposed. I'm saying no, Ray Blain. Who else? There are others to vote either. I've got who is left. Oh, Frida is not here. I don't see Frida.
I'm here.
How do you vote, Frida?
No, I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me, I'm sorry. I gotta go. I got something going on. I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta go. Sorry.
Okay, so the motion, Carl's motion carries to deny of four to think, I think it's going to be five to two, five to one, because I think Frida's abstention is going to be counted as an aye. Okay, that concludes the agenda tonight. We had yes. Was there a comment from someone? All right, we I need a minute to find in my other agenda here. So, okay, here it is. We have planning department reports.
Yes, sir. So first, I would like to introduce Kelly Hughes. She's on the screen as Cassie Bullock. She's not Cassie. She's the new customer service specialist. She just started with us, and she lives in Pittsboro. So familiar with the area, and she has previous work experience working for an engineering firm and administrative experience, so I'm sure she's going to help keep us all straight. So we're super excited to have her with us. And I also wanted to mention that we have the first round of the parking lot text amendments, U D O text amendments coming to you next month. The majority of the first submittal to you would be reorganizing sections of the U D O. We also have proposed townhome standards, since Clarion did not write any in the U D O. We're also working on new specifications for this first round. We're focusing on road specs. So that, that will be going to the Board of Commissioners the second meeting in September, and we've, we've also started discussions on the industrial zoning district area of town. That was a high priority item for both the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. So staff has already had one meeting with the chamber, the chamber office and also the E D C. So we're going to have a second meeting with them, and we're going to put together some information and options for the boards to consider for the industrial zoning portions of the town. Next month, we might have a preliminary plot request. It's actually for Rexford Landing, which is now known as Corbett Landing. So that is slated to go before the planning board. Like I said, the U D O text amendments and the, the other item that might come before the board is the, the special use permit for the Townsend tract for a proposed planning development. I also just wanted to mention, since it was brought up tonight, the land use plan update, staff has met with two different consulting groups, and we have two more that we're meeting with this week and next week. So we're going to have some options of different ways we can update the land use plan in phases, and we'll, we'll be presenting that to the board as well, to the Board of Commissioners. So you know, that, that's something that I'm sure the planning board is going to be a part of, and so we'll keep you guys up to date with that process. And then since the C T P, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, was mentioned tonight as well, I wanted to give the board an update that we requested last year for DOT to assist the town in updating the C T P, which was last updated in two thousand and eleven, so it's even older than the land use plan. They, they just had a senior staff person resign, so they, they're not able to assist with the full update at this time. So we're looking at options of different parts of town that we could try to focus on before we're going to do a complete update. So the planning board will be a part of all of those, whatever we end up having to do, either in phases or the, the full update, the planning board will be a part of that process as well. And I think that was everything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have a list of upcoming events, which sort of speaks for itself. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Eric here, I'll move to adjourn.
Good. Okay.
Second, Carl.
And Carl seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Good, we are all adjourned, and thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Cassie and everybody that's back there in the background. Appreciate it a lot. Thanks a lot, Teresa.
Yes, sir, thank you. Y'all have a great night.
You're welcome. Thanks, bye.
Bye.